I'd like to call to order the special formal meeting of the Iowa City City Council for April the 2nd, 2018. Roll call, please.
Botchway? Cole?
Here.
Mims?
Here.
Sully?
Yeah.
Taylor?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Throgmorton?
Here. I'd like to note that Kingsley Botchway cannot be with us tonight. He is compelled to participate in a panel discussion that's taking place on a topic that's close to his heart. So with that, we can turn... Well, I'll say one other thing. I want to welcome all of you to your city hall, and it's a real pleasure to meet many of you who I've not met before, and it's great to have you down here. One of these days, spring is going to come. That's a prediction I'm willing to stick my neck out on. I don't know when, but one of these days soon. Okay, item two, Student Leadership Awards. We have two students from that outstanding elementary school, Lincoln, Lucia Allgood and Eli Hagadorn. I said Eli, I meant Ellie, right? Sorry, I apologize. Let me stand between you. All right, well, it's great to see you again, Ellie and Lucia, right?
Yep.
Yep, okay. So Lincoln Elementary, you're going to get a new renovation down there, you know. The school's going to get transformed a little bit. We're pretty excited about that. All right, Ellie, do you want to read your speech? All right, I'll hold this for you.
My name is Ellie Hagadorn, and I am a student at Lincoln Elementary. I'm excited to be here. I would like to thank the city council for recognizing young leaders, my teachers and peers for setting a good example, and my family for their support. To me, leadership means being involved in your community by taking action and making decisions that make a difference. Being a leader requires kindness, respect, and courage. I've had many opportunities to be a leader in my school. I have participated in Safety Patrol for the past two years and have served as student council representative. In addition, I have raised money for charities including Jump Rope for Heart, H2O for Haiti, and the Dance Marathon. I have also found ways to support things I care about in my community. I believe that helping, even in small ways, can have a big impact. For example, I have collected supplies and raised money for the animal shelter and the homeless. I'm super excited for all the great opportunities I'll get to have next year at Southeast Junior High. Thank you.
All right. Great work, Ellie. I mean Haiti and the animal shelter and all that, helping the homeless, that's terrific work. Very proud of you. Okay, so return to Lucia. Yeah, so your turn.
Hi, my name is Lucia Allgood, and I would like to thank the city council and everyone who nominated me this award. This award was given to me because people think I'm a good leader, but I don't think a good citizen needs to be a good leader. I think a good citizen tries to improve their community and the lives of people in their community. It was a pleasure to be here.
So we have Student Leadership Awards for both of you, and they are identical, except your name appears on them, right, separately? Okay, so let me read this. Student Leadership Award. For your outstanding qualities of leadership within Lincoln Elementary as well as the community, and for your sense of responsibility and helpfulness to others, we recognize Lucia Allgood as an outstanding student leader. Your community is proud of you. Presented by the Iowa City City Council, April 2018. So Lucia, there's yours.
Thank you.
And Ellie, yours is exactly the same, except it says Ellie Hagadorn. So here you go.
Thank you.
Proud parents out there, right? Okay, well done. Time to get back to work, you know, homework. Our former mayor, Matt Hyatt, used to make a joke about whether you want to stay here for the rest of the meeting or go do your homework or watch TV or whatever. So it's nice to see all of you.
It's got a Lincoln on it.
That's quite a contention there.
It is my child, one of my children. It's the readers.
All right, let's turn to item three, Proclamations. We have four proclamations to read tonight, so I've asked my fellow council members to read three of them, but I want to read the first one, which is a proclamation declaring Bob Dvorsky Day. Whereas Senator Robert Dvorsky has served our community with distinction for nearly 40 years, including 23 years in the Iowa Senate, eight years in the Iowa House, and seven years on the Corleville City Council; and whereas Senator Dvorsky's public service also includes serving as executive officer for the Sixth Judicial District Department of Correctional Services, president of the Board of Directors for the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County, member of the Community Corrections Improvement Association Board, and Recreation Superintendent for Mason City; and whereas Senator Dvorsky's roots in the community run deep, having attended University High School in Iowa City and having earned a BS in Master of Public Administration from the University of Iowa; and whereas, as a legislator and in 12 years as Senate Appropriations Chair, Senator Dvorsky has consistently been a great advocate for education, fighting for funding, and strengthening programs at the University of Iowa, Kirkwood Community College, and K-12 school systems across the state; and whereas, Senator Dvorsky has helped establish and fund the Iowa Flood Center and College of Public Health at the University of Iowa, and programming improvements at Lake McBride State Park, and was instrumental in securing flood recovery funds for the university; and whereas, Senator Dvorsky steered legislation that streamlined prisons and strengthened community-based corrections, and was awarded the Arthur New Award for Exceptional Policy Development by the American Parole and Probation Association. Now, therefore, I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby declare that Iowa City will observe on April the 6th, 2018, Bob Dvorsky Day. I urge all citizens to take part in recognizing and honoring the many contributions that Senator Dvorsky has made to our community, and wish him the best on his future endeavors. So I'll give this to Bob at an event that will be held for him Saturday, I guess, on the 6th. Okay, next is Arbor Day. John?
City of Iowa City proclamation. Whereas, the coming of spring produces a renewal of interest in tree planting for beauty, shade, conservation, and many other purposes beneficial to all people; and whereas, the observation of Arbor Day has long been characterized by the planting and preservation of trees; and whereas, we hope that the future will see the creation of a better environment through the use of trees throughout our cities, towns, and countryside; and whereas, trees in Iowa City beautify our community, increase property values, and enhance the economic vitality of business areas. Now, therefore, I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim April 27th, 2018, to be Arbor Day in Iowa City, and I urge all citizens to participate in tree planting and preservation projects throughout the year.
Julie Seidel Johnson, I think, is going to accept her proclamation.
And I'll just be very brief to say thank you for all your support, for the amount of tree planting and the care of the tree canopy. As you know, in the last year, you've been doing a tree inventory. I appreciate the fact that we are recognizing the importance of trees throughout the community. Thanks.
There you go, Julie. Thank you so much. Okay, next is Fair Housing Month, and I think Pauline Taylor is going to read that.
City of Iowa City proclamation. Whereas, April marks the 50-year anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act of 1968, which seeks to eliminate discrimination in housing opportunities and to affirmatively expand housing choices for all persons; and whereas, the ongoing struggle for dignity and housing opportunity for all is not the exclusive province of the federal government; and whereas, vigorous local efforts to combat discrimination can be as effective, if not more so, than federal efforts; and whereas, illegal barriers to equal opportunity in housing, no matter how subtle, diminish the rights of all. Whereas, the Iowa City Human Rights Commission is committed to enforcing fair housing laws, and as part of that commitment, it will host a complimentary fair housing training on Tuesday, April 17th, 2018, to educate the public on the right to equal housing opportunities. Please visit www.icgov.org/humanrights for more information. Now, therefore, James Throgmorton, Mayor of Iowa City, does hereby proclaim April 2018 to be Fair Housing Month in Iowa City, and encourages all to abide by the letter and spirit of fair housing laws.
Okay, I think we have somebody to accept their proclamation here. It'd be Jeff Falk. Hi, Jeff. Go ahead and hand it to him.
I just want to thank the city for their efforts and support of fair housing.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, and the last proclamation is National Service Recognition Day. Rodney?
Whereas, service to others is a hallmark of American character and central to how we meet our challenges; and whereas, AmeriCorps participants address the more pressing challenges facing our communities, from educating for jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families to providing health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters; and whereas, AmeriCorps participants serve more than 70,000 locations across the country, including here in Johnson County, bolstering local organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being; and whereas, national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars; and whereas, the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors, city leaders, county officials, and tribal leaders nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joined in with the National League of Cities, City of Service, and officials from across the country to recognize the impact of service on the Day of Recognition for National Service on April 3rd, 2018. Now, therefore, I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim April 3rd, 2018, to be National Service Recognition Day in the city of Iowa, and encourage all residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city, and thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities.
Great. Thank you. I think Chrissy Kangenelli from Shelterhouse was going to accept this proclamation tonight, but she ran into a problem and couldn't be here. So Chrissy, if you're watching, congratulations and thank you. All right, so we can move to item four, which is to consider adoption of the consent calendar as presented or amended. I guess I really want a motion to approve as amended.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Sully, seconded by Thomas. Discussion.
What was the amendment?
It's one extra piece of communication with regard to massage parlors and human trafficking.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. I want to note a few things. Lots of items on the consent calendar. One has to do with the fact that we're awarding a contract to do Phase III of the Riverfront Crossings Park. Very pleased to see that. Also, we are setting public hearings for numerous items, including an asphalt resurfacing project for U.S. Highway 1, which involves mainly Governor Street and part of Burlington Street. Also, several public hearings concerning rezoning historic landmark designations. And I'll just mention the addresses of the streets and of the properties involved. One is 715 Park Road. The next is 1021... Sorry, 1029 North Dodge Street, 504 East Bloomington Street, 213 East Market Street, 412 North Dubuque Street, 319 East Bloomington Street, and 410 through 412 North Clinton Streets. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Botchway? Oops. Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes, motion carries six to zero. All right, item five, Community Comment. For anybody who would like to comment on any topic that's not on the formal meeting agenda, should feel free to do so now. I'd like to ask you to state your name when you come up, and limit your comments to not more than five minutes. All right, seeing no one, we'll move to item six, which is Planning and Zoning Matters. Item 6A, Rezoning Lower West Branch Road. This is an ordinance approving an OPD-5 and OPD-8 Sensitive Areas Development Plan for Outlet H, Lindeman Subdivision Part 2A, located south of Lower West Branch Road and north of Anna Street. This is second consideration, but the applicant has requested expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Taylor. Discussion. I guess ordinarily, I would expect there to be some discussion on the part of neighbors, expressing their views about the proposal, but we haven't heard anything from neighbors. So, and there was a, you know, substantial public hearing process through the Planning and Zoning Commission, so I think I'm okay with waiving second consideration. Anybody else for discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Motion carries six to zero.
Move final approval at this time?
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Thomas. Discussion.
Well, I did notice that the little common area had a further enhancement from our, I believe, anyway. Was that added to the drawings? So there's now a gazebo in the center of that lawn area, so...
Oh, Bob?
I believe it's shown on the preliminary plot. It just, we didn't show it last time.
Oh, I see, okay.
Oh, okay.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Sully, seconded by Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 6B, Lindeman Part 8. This is a resolution approving the preliminary plot of Lindeman Subdivision Part 8, Iowa City, Iowa.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Thomas. Discussion. This is the same subdivision, is it not? Yeah, okay. So we pretty much know what this is all about. Discussion, anybody? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 6C, Occupancy Amendments. This is an ordinance amending Title 14, zoning, and Chapter 17-5 Housing Code to amend and clarify regulations related to occupancy of residential dwellings... Excuse me. ...and to establish standards to ensure adequate parking and open space for both rental and owner households that promote safe, healthy, and stable residential neighborhoods. This is second consideration, but the staff has requested expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Taylor. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Move final adoption?
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Thomas. Discussion.
I would just say, I want to thank staff again for the work they've done on these ordinances. These are really important in terms of the changes that the legislature made a year ago, taking away our ability to do things based on familial status, and so I think these are really important in terms of our neighborhood preservation and stabilization. So thanks to staff.
I agree, and it's interesting to reflect back on the moment when we first realized that state was going to enact that legislation and recognize that staff would have to go into the trenches, so to speak, and do some pretty hard work. And so thank you, Eleanor, thanks to the planning staff, NDS staff, I should say, and everyone else involved. It's a lot of work. Thank you. All right, so we have a motion on the floor, right? Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 6D, Forest Hills Estates. This is a resolution approving the preliminary plot of Forest Hills Estates, Iowa City, Iowa.
Move resolution.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Mims. Discussion. Good evening, Bob.
Bob McLough, Senior Planner. You recently approved the rezoning of this property from high-density single-family to high-density single-family with the planned development overlay. This just follows up with that by creating five lots, one commercial office lot, it's kind of a buffer between the interstate and the development, and then four residential lots, which will include a variety of townhouse and multifamily buildings, including a senior housing development, and then a large outlot for woodland preservation. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this at their March 15th meeting and recommends approval. Be happy to try to answer any questions.
Any questions for Bob? Bob, I don't know if you were here during the work session.
No, I was not.
Yeah, so we had a lengthy discussion about three separate roadways and roadway designs for those particular roads, including Foster. So surely you will need to talk with Jason or Ron about what we decided, and so that the developer knows what's involved, and a lot of conversation will have to take place. Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. No further questions of Bob. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 6E, Pine Grove Estates. This is a resolution approving the extraterritorial preliminary plot of Pine Grove Estates, Johnson County, Iowa.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Sully. Discussion. Bob, again.
This property is located within our two-mile fringe, and it is addressed by the Fringe Area Agreement with Johnson County. Although it's within our fringe area, it is not within our growth area, so it is not anticipated that this will be annexed into the city anytime soon. Therefore, the Fringe Area Agreement basically defers to the county standards for development. The proposal, it's, the property's located at the intersection of Dubuque and Stewart. The proposal is to take one existing lot and divide it into four lots with a small cul-de-sac street. There's one house on the property now that will be removed for this development. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this at their March 15th meeting, found it in compliance with the Fringe Area Agreement, and recommends approval.
Bob, I wonder if you could slow down a little bit with regard to some of this, because in my experience at least, when a new council member comes on board, this is one of those confusing things. Why is it we're voting on something that's outside the city limits of Iowa City? What's an extraterritorial agreement? You know, stuff like that. Sure.
Yeah, the state recognizes that if development occurs right adjacent to a city and it doesn't meet city standards and then eventually gets annexed into the city, that creates all sorts of problems in terms of compatibility with infrastructure, street design, provision of sewer and water. So the state grants cities the ability to approve subdivisions within two miles of their boundary, so that we can assure that those subdivisions will not have a negative effect on the city or prevent future annexation or growth. In implementing that provision of the state code, the city has reached an agreement with the Johnson County Board of Supervisors that looks at various neighborhoods or parts of the fringe area and has different standards depending on their proximity to the city and the likelihood of annexation. This particular area is not likely to be annexed, therefore, we defer to the county standards.
Yeah, great. Thanks so much.
Just for clarification, is this one of those situations where we do have discretion to vote no, or is it one of those situations where if they meet the standards, that essentially we have to? Maybe that's more of an Eleanor question. Like a preliminary plot, if that's approved, then pretty much you have to. I know that's different, but do we have discretion?
It's the latter.
Okay.
It's not a rezoning, but it's a subdivision plot.
Okay.
So we don't have discretion?
Don't have discretion if they meet the minimum standards. Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Thank you, Bob. Any further discussion here among council members?
The only thing I would say is that if I had discretion, I would vote no. I don't like these sorts of projects. I don't, I think that they're sprawl. I don't like them, but we have to follow the law, and so we'll be voting yes, but I just wanted to make that of record.
I knew that other foot was going to fall. Okay, anybody else? Roll call, please.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes, motion carries six to zero. Item 7, Airport Outlet Sale. This is a resolution approving sale of city property north of the Iowa City Municipal Airport to Harry Hinckley. I'm going to open the public hearing. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Mims. Discussion. Could someone explain what this is all about, please?
Sure. It's a very short strip of land that's just north of Rupert Road there. It's disconnected from the rest of the airport grounds. The owner of the Alexis Park Inn down there would like to purchase it. Right now, we have to maintain it. We send a lawnmower across the street there with really no benefit to us. So proceeds from the sale will go to an airport improvement project that's yet to be determined.
Great. Thanks, Simon.
Just a quick question. Do they have plans to develop on that site, or they just wanted to extend their property?
They just wanted to extend their property. There may be a future development that this helps create density for. You can't develop this parcel of land because it's in the fly paths, but it would make their existing parcel larger. So if there is future redevelopment, they would be able to have more density clustered.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 8, Water Rate Increases. This is an ordinance amending Title 3, entitled Finances, Taxation, and Fees. Chapter 4, entitled Schedule of Fees, Rates, Charges, Bonds, Fines, and Penalties. And Title 16, entitled Public Works. Chapter 3, entitled City Utilities. Article A, entitled General Provisions. Section 5, entitled Establishing City Utility Accounts Deposits Required. This is second consideration.
Move second consideration. Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Sully. Discussion. I never know really what's... I never know, really, what's being referred to when I read a long train of things that are being amended. Are these, like, subsidiary parts of chapters and paragraphs and all that?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Starts with the title, goes to chapter.
Sorry, I got a phone on. Okay. Good. Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Any discussion?
I just want to talk about Title III, Chapter 3A5, for the deposit, waiving the deposit if the account holders enroll on the, how you call that, sure pay or sure pay?
Sure pay.
Yeah, sure pay. Yeah, this is really good. But you know, I guess, when we, when the city trying to do like a policy that really helpful for people, yeah, waiving the deposit is really helpful for a lot of people. But I would like to make sure this is, we are doing it for a lot of people. When we say they have to enroll on the sure pay, that means they have to have a bank account. And in this case, I guess, we are just, it will be really barrier for the undocumented people or for the people who really can't open a bank account. And they are the people who need it the most. Like, I mean, like, need the, to waive the deposit, of course. I don't know, just in the future, or I don't know how you can do that. But really, we have to think about including everyone in the city when we try to do a policy that benefit people.
This strikes me as a valuable point. So, has the staff had discussion pertaining to this particular point in the past?
Dennis Bach, instead Finance Director. I don't know if we've had discussion to that particular point. But this does allow individual who has been delinquent on their account to sign back up and get that fee waived if they enroll in the sure pay discount. So, it does provide an advantage to those that do have or have been delinquent on their accounts. But we have not had a particular discussion about whether or not those individuals do or do not have bank accounts.
So, if somebody does not have a bank account, they can still enroll?
Not that I'm aware of. The general idea is that if individuals enrolled in a sure pay disc, or in the sure pay program, that the money comes out of their account automatically, and the likelihood of them being delinquent has diminished. And so, we're really, the point is to encourage individuals to enroll in that sure pay program to avoid being delinquent and avoid having to provide that deposit in the future. There's been a discussion of how we could accomplish that if individuals do not have a bank account.
Good. Thanks, Dennis. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Sally?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Morton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 9, Established TIF District. This is an ordinance providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the 2017 amended Riverside Drive Urban Renewal Area in the City of Iowa City, County of Johnson, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Iowa City, County of Johnson, Iowa City Community District, and other taxing districts, be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, rebates, grants, monies advanced to an indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by said city in connection with the Riverside Drive Urban Renewal Plan. This is first consideration.
Move first consideration.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by MEMS. Good evening, Wendy.
Good evening, council. I'm Wendy Ford, Economic Development Coordinator. And the long ordinance that Jim just read was a long way of saying, essentially, this is the last step needed to be able to use TIF increment from any of our urban renewal areas for urban renewal projects. You have to have a TIF ordinance to have the authority to be able to use those tax dollars. And this is the final step in, in doing that for the new area that was added to the Riverside Drive Urban Renewal Area last year. And you can see that, if I could get a cursor here, you can see the Orchard District neighborhood. And you'll recall that last year, that was added to the Riverside Drive Urban Renewal Area. And this TIF ordinance covers that area, just like the TIF ordinance that covered the original area covers that. So, tax increment can be used, then, for the number of urban renewal projects that are planned for that area that include streetscape design. It was used for the Riverside West Apartments there where the car lot and service area used to be. There are other projects, such as a pedestrian tunnel that will go under the railroad embankment, riverbank stabilization, a whole signalization of the Myrtle and Riverside Drive intersection. So, the increment that comes out of the entire district now, also including the Orchard District, will be able to use to help pay for those projects.
Thank you, Wendy.
Wendy, can you remind me again, when you say the river crossing, is this from Burlington? You're going to the?
Oh, yeah. I should have pointed that out. At the south end there is Highway 6. So, this is the corner with Joanne's Fabric and Village Inn, for example. Hampton Inn is up here, McDonald's, and then all the way up to Myrtle Avenue. And that essentially is about right across the street from the Dairy Queen. And then, on the left, it goes back up Benton Street a ways, behind this first and/or second tier of blocks here on Orchard, and then to the west bank of the Iowa River on the east side.
So, Maz's question had to do with space. Mine has to do with time. So, no, we're not getting into the space-time continuum. But I'm wondering whether there's an end date for this TIF ordinance. In other words, will it ever come to an end? Or will there have to be formal action by the council later on to bring it to an end?
Well, this, this TIF ordinance covers an urban renewal area that was founded for reasons of slum and blight. And as you know, now, those areas have, don't have a sunset to them. Which is not to say that you, as a governing body, couldn't put an end to those by voting so. But that's also, you'd have to do that for the TIF ordinance as well.
Okay. So, the question applies to the next ordinance as well, right? So, I feel some discomfort about, you know, approving a TIF ordinance that goes on forever. So...
Now, the next one, I mean, it's different. It's only a 10-year length.
And it explicitly says that? Did I overlook that, maybe? Yeah.
For the second one, that's a specific type of urban renewal area that only has a 10-year length.
All right. But this one is indefinite unless we make it definite somehow. Yeah. I don't know if I, we ought to do that. But as I was reading the material today, that's, or yesterday, that's what I found myself thinking. Do the rest of you have any questions or any?
What would the downside concern be of that, Jim? So, articulate why. That's a concern of yours.
Well, it would mean, if I understand correctly, it would mean that all incremental taxes generated within this small portion that we're adding by this amendment would go to uses specified by the city for an indefinite number of years. Okay. So, that's good. Clarify.
No, because this enable, you capture the increment, but you don't take it away until you approve a project for, for use of that increment. So, it's not, the tax dollars aren't diverted until there's a decision made to use those dollars for an urban renewal project.
Can you just really tell me what the difference between the small, the TIF increment from the small portion area and the whole river crossing area? What the difference there?
There's not really any difference. It was, this was, this was a piece that was added. So, we don't have a TIF ordinance for it. So, we have to get it in place.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Then, for every single project, if you want to use those TIF dollars, that would be another vote of the council.
Yeah. Because I suppose you add it to the riverfront crossing, I saw this automatically, whatever apply to the riverfront and crossing will apply to that area. That's what I saw it.
Yes.
But we have to, like, approve this, you mean?
It enables you to be able to approve a project that would use those dollars.
Okay.
So, these, some of these projects, were they not in our, in our CIP?
No, they've, they've been, they've all been vetted by you.
It's been talked about.
Yes. And I think most of them have been voted on. And that generally happens if it's not a development project like the Riverview West Apartments building, apartment buildings. That will happen at least by our December 1 certification of TIF projects to the state.
All right. So, I gather there's no real concern with regard to this particular question that I asked?
Well, much of it has not been redeveloped. So, I mean, I would think that would be the reason to continue keeping it in place. I mean, we haven't seen, we've seen a couple of two to three projects, but...
And the reason you set, you do the TIF ordinance now is because you want to do it before it's, there's a redevelopment. If you do it too long after there's a redevelopment, then there's no increment because the base value is set on the redeveloped value.
Okay. Any further discussion? Thank you, Wendy. But you might as well stay there because next topic's coming up. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Morton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 10, Established TIF District. The language is virtually identical, but not entirely. So, I guess I'll read all the language. This is an ordinance providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within that area added to the Foster Road Urban Renewal Area in the City of Iowa City, Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Iowa City, County of Johnson, Iowa City Community School District, and other taxing districts, be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, rebates, grants, monies advanced to an indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by said city in connection with the Foster Road Urban Renewal Plan. This is a motion for first consideration.
Move first consideration.
Second.
Moved by MEMS, seconded by Thomas. Discussion. Wendy, there's something special about this, isn't there? Can you?
Right.
Help viewers know?
The Foster Road Urban Renewal Area, over which you're now considering enacting a TIF ordinance, was, was founded on the basis of infrastructure building for an area that serves non-low to moderate income people. So, what's different about this when it comes time to using the tax increment generated by redevelopment, excuse me, is that a portion of that increment has to be set aside for use in our, for our affordable housing efforts. And in Johnson, and that, by state law, has to be an amount equal to the percentage of people at 60% or lower of the area median income in Johnson County. And that's 45% here. So, of every dollar in incremental taxes generated in the Foster Road Urban Renewal Area, 45 cents will go to the Affordable Housing Fund. And 55, 55 cents can be used for the urban renewal project. And in this case, it's the road we've been talking about since the work session.
Yeah. It's a unique way to use TIF, isn't it? Like you said, it's a special.
And it has a 10-year life, too. I think I didn't say that. But this one is done in 10 years. The urban renewal area sunsets in 10 years, and the TIF ordinance over it sunsets at the same schedule.
Yeah. Thank you.
That's a good explanation. I just make one change. It's 80%, defined as 80% for the income threshold, not 60.
80% of the area median income?
You can certainly choose to use it for 60%, but it's anything 80%.
You're referring to the state law standard?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to make sure, are we really just establishing TIF district today? Or we, and we can change in the future how that kind of TIF, like, the city want on there? We can change it? Or we are doing that, all of it now, today?
You're really not deciding today to spend any?
I know.
TIF money?
Yes, I understand. But now, like, she, she was explaining, like, the 40%, and because we're going to use infrastructure and all these kind of things. Can we just, like, yeah, establishing this, like, a TIF district area today? But like, it's up to us in the future, when the developer come and ask for TIF, to tell them exactly what we want. Or, or no, as soon as we done this today, we have to go with what, you know?
It's what you said first.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, establish it as a TIF area. And don't worry about it right now unless they come. And after that, we tell them the requirement.
Right. The next thing, well, there are certain requirements about this kind of district, like Wendy just went through, that we can't change. It can only be 10 years long. There has to be the set aside for low and moderate income housing. In terms of the details of who you're going to give that money to, and the details of what has to be built, et cetera, et cetera, that comes later.
Sure. Great, yeah. Just making sure.
Any other discussion?
I'm just, you know, that's why I ask too much question.
Yeah. No, no.
Good questions.
Ask questions, for sure. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Morton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 11, Social Justice and Racial Equity Grant allocations.
I just have to excuse myself on this one.
Sure. Resolution adopting the social justice and racial equity grant allocations for fiscal year 2018. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by MEMS. So, Maz here just stepped out, I think, because she has to recuse herself from this particular vote.
She has identified a conflict of interest and is, is recusing herself for that reason.
Okay. Good evening, Stephanie.
So, this is a resolution to approve the recommendation from the Human Rights Commission to fund four of the 28 applications that they got for the Social Justice Racial Equity Grant.
Could you say a little bit about what the four grants are?
Sure.
You know, the amount of money, who they are, what they're going to do?
Sure. So, the, one is to the shelter house to supplement existing program that they currently have that assists persons who are chronically homeless, who also have some mental health concerns. And this is an opportunity to fund activities and programs for them at no cost. Some of those things would also include recreational activities to, to help with people getting more exercise and, and doing better just in general physically. The other one is to the Healthy Kids School-Based Health Clinics. And that is an extension of a program that they currently offer to youth who are parts of the Iowa City Community School District. So, this would extend mental health treatment and/or counseling to families of those kids as well. So, it wasn't just one person in the home seeking assistance through the school. And I should also mention that it includes a Know Your Rights series that would help, this is primarily targeted at folks who are refugees or immigrants. So, it would also coincide with a series of Know Your Rights, so that people are more familiar with their rights here in this country. The third grant that the commission is recommending is for Neighborhood and Development Services. So it would also coincide with a series of Know Your Rights, so that people are more familiar with their rights here in this country. The third grant that the commission is recommending is for Neighborhood and Development Services, and that is for $600, and that is for Walk and Roll Wednesday. And that is targeted at reducing social isolation, to get people out in their neighborhoods, to meet their neighbors, and also to take advantage of some of the recreational facilities that the city has throughout, particularly in this case, the south of Highway 6, and then I believe it's east of the Iowa River. So it's targeting a specific geographical location here in town. And I should mention, the first grant for the shelter house, they are requesting $5,000 for that. The second one, the Healthy Kids School-Based Health Clinics, that was $12,300. As I just mentioned, the Neighborhood Development Services is for 600. And then the final one, they're recommending is to the Center for Worker Justice, to provide four 10-week classes for youth and adult that would provide job training skills, and it would be targeted at immigrants and folks who are low to moderate income. And that request is for $10,900, which would be over the $25,000 if we added all of them together. So the commission also had a friendly request to the city council to consider extending that funding for the Center for Worker Justice for the additional $3,800, so that they would be fully funded.
Okay. Any questions for Stephanie?
If we didn't do the extra, so you're asking for $3,800 more?
Correct.
And if we didn't do that, then would it be then sort of pro rata between the remaining four?
The way the commission recommended it is it would cut $3,800 from what the Center for Worker Justice is requesting, which if you look at their application, they're, you know, the four classes, 10 weeks for 20 youth and 20 adults, and they're estimating that per class, it's about $2,700. So if they do not get the full funding, it's assumed that they would either not be able to take as many participants, or there would not be as many courses offered.
It ends up being this, if we don't approve the order.
Well, I'd like to say, it seems to me that the Work Skills Initiative that the Center for Worker Justice has proposed, and would be funded if we agree to the $3,800 additional amount, is the kind of thing we were, one of the kinds of things we were looking for in some of our earlier strategic plan discussions. So it seems quite reasonable to me, assuming there's no problem from a staff point of view in terms of allocating an additional $3,800.
Yeah, we would probably pull from the general fund to supplement that grant allocation.
Yeah. I thought that would be the case, but...
I agree, Jim, because I think we did have a discussion about even increasing the allocation for the social justice grant.
Oh, we did, and for the 4th of July.
For fiscal year 19.
Yeah, so I don't think there would be a problem with adding this now.
Okay. Any further questions for Stephanie?
I'm going to support these.
Thank you, Stephanie.
I think one of the things we discussed at our last meeting, and I think we now have a kind of a subcommittee meeting set up with Pauline and Kingsley and Jeff and myself to talk about some guidance from council going forward, because I think some people had some questions about these, not necessarily disagreeing, but just large organizations, small organizations, new programs, more established programs, those different kinds of things. So I think, I think the Human Rights Commission did a great job. I read through all the applications, a lot of very good ones there, a lot, I think, of aspirational things that didn't have a whole lot of strength behind them yet, in terms of what I would be willing to give public dollars to. But I think the commission did a great job in narrowing it down, and I think we'll have an opportunity to have further discussion about maybe our priorities and some guidance for the council, for the commission going forward. But certainly with what they've done, I'll be supportive.
I think I need to clarify a point, Susan, and I think Eleanor and Kelly are looking at it now. My recollection is that in discussion at our last meeting, we decided not to create a committee, because that would raise open meetings kinds of concerns, and that we were going to have a discussion.
It was more a gathering of feedback and preference from each council member individually, routed through staff. So Jeff is going to meet with you all individually, I believe, to gather that feedback, and then we'll come back with some kind of best practices through Jeff and Stephanie to do that.
Yeah, fair enough. Yeah, that's what you were looking for, Eleanor?
No, I'm looking for something else.
No, something else?
Something else.
Fair enough. I shouldn't guess what other people are, Eleanor, and why.
But that's a good question.
Sure.
Okay, well, I want to thank all the organizations that applied. There were 28 applications, right? So I want to make sure they know that we appreciate their interest, and the fact that they did take the time to prepare proposals and apply. I also want to thank the Human Rights Commissioners for taking the time to go through those 28 applications. It's no easy task to do that kind of thing, and then to judge which ones they think were best, that's even harder. And I want to thank Stephanie. I'm sure you did a lot of work on this, too, as well. So thanks so much for that, Stephanie. So my sense is that the four projects we have before us are really excellent ones, and I agree with Susan that we do need to think a bit about guidance for the future, and try to shape, clarify our own guidance about that. And we'll get to that point later on, yeah. Any further discussion?
The only thing I would say is, with these four organizations, the thing I really like about each one of them is they all seem to have a proven track record and an organizational infrastructure to ensure that these dollars will be wisely spent. So I think as we continue to have that discussion in terms of what we want to do, that'll be a very fruitful work session. I would like to see probably a majority of having, you know, organizations with a proven track record, while at the same time identifying the parameters for maybe some startups, more sort of seed funding, to get them to grow, too. So I think that's what I view this, is allowing existing organizations to have new programs, and then at some point identifying how we can assist some of those more emerging nonprofits accelerate their efforts, while ensuring that they have adequate oversight controls. That's the hardest part about nonprofits.
Personally agree with you about that particular point, Rockney. I think we want to allocate some funds for those kinds of startup initiatives.
That'd be a future discussion.
Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion?
I've got a question. So probably Stephanie can answer this, is I see the recommendation for full funding plus an additional $3,800, but I, and then you've got it set out, how it would be different in the car, but I don't see an exhibit attached to the grant, so I didn't know if the presumption was, it would just be for the $25,000, or, it sounds like you are wanting to go with the...
Well, my understanding is that that would be something for council to consider. So we didn't put it as part of it. It was intentionally left out, because, you know, we didn't want to assume anything.
Okay, all right. So we need clarification as to what the decision is, does it include the $3,800?
Sure. My understanding is it does include the $3,800.
Yep.
Okay. That's good.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Further discussion? No. Roll call, please.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Oops, Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Maz can return. I'll wait for her to come back in, take a short break here. All right, we'll turn to item 12, pedestrian mall improvements. This is a resolution awarding contract and authorizing the mayor to sign and the city clerk to attest a contract for construction of the pedestrian mall improvements project.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mims, second by Thomas. Scott, would you briefly describe this for the viewers mainly, so that they understand what we're doing here?
Scott's over, senior civil engineer. So last Tuesday, we accepted bids for the pedestrian mall improvements project. We had three bids. All, well, the base bid came in lower than the engineer's estimate slightly. We had three alternate bids, one for the stage canopy, two for the, the second one was for the Black Hawk Mini Park shade structure, and then the third one was for the salvaging of the existing bricks. Staff is recommending the base bid and alternate one, which is the stage canopy, for approval.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Scott?
Scott, was there an outcome on the resalvaging of the bricks by some other means, or...
Yeah, so we have, we've had interest in some other sources to be able to get rid of the bricks. Part of the base bid is to actually haul the bricks to one of our parks, the Musquaki Park. So we're not actually hauling them to the landfill. We're actually going to try and find somebody else that may be interested in them, that may be lower cost than what the bids came in at.
So it's pleasing to see the total cost, including alternate one, is lower than what we anticipated a couple months ago?
That's correct.
First discussed this.
Yep.
Yeah, and what's the construction timetable if we approve this?
So the late start date for Phase 1, which is the Dubuque Street Corridor, is the end of this month, so it'd be the 30th of April is the start date. And then the final completion of the overall project, both Phase 1 and Phase 2, is October 31st of 2019. So it's a two-year construction season project.
Okay. Actually, I assume that our social media folks will amply advertise this, publicize it, that is?
Yes, I believe they're working actively with the downtown district to provide not only information to the downtown businesses, but also to the public at large. So we'll have sufficient, definitely sufficient communications.
Okay, good.
I guess one other thing I'd like to add on that is, we do have another, our third public meeting, April 12th, from 4 to 6, and it's the library. So just one last public meeting to give people a heads up on what to expect during construction. In addition to that, we also had some smaller meetings a few weeks ago with the downtown businesses and property owners to kind of give them a heads up of what to expect in kind of the phasing, so.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you, Scott. Any council discussion?
I'm just really looking forward to seeing this go forward. As I've talked before, I think, you know, that ped mall is such an important area for this whole community, as the university recruits students, faculty, staff, et cetera. It's just a real vibrant part of our downtown. I think to get that upgraded, obviously, a lot of this cost is the utilities, but certainly making it safer with removing those bricks and getting that done. And I'm really pleased and not surprised to see the outreach from staff to downtown district business owners. I think we saw how that worked really well on the Washington Street project. Might not have started off as smooth from everybody's end, but I think once we kind of got into it, and with the downtown district and business owners really communicating with the city how we could be more helpful, and, you know, they did the ribbons on the fence and all different kinds of things to really let people know that they were open, open for business and things going on. So I think that's gotten this one off to even a better start in terms of that communication collaboration, because that obviously can have a huge impact on businesses. So just remind everybody that they'll all be open during the whole construction.
On part of the point you made, Susan, I'd like to note that I heard nothing but praise for the work Scott did with regard to connecting to all those businesses, with all those businesses on Washington Street. So great job, Scott. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to say, the, I'm pleased we got a bidder who came in at a price where we could award the performance stage with the canopy. I think that's a really important piece of the project, so I'm glad that that was something we could fold into it, and that some resolution was made with the bricks. The thought of that all going to the landfill was not something I liked to think about. So I'm glad we came up with a way of solving that without having to award it as a bid alternate.
Anyone else?
I just want to really thank the staff for doing this. I guess this is like, really a lot of work, and like, a lot of discussion back and forth, going, getting this and do that, but, you know, finally, we get to a good bid, and thank you. Thank you for your work, yeah.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. I guess I should have said, I'm glad to see us moving ahead with this. I know it's been taking a long time to develop the details and all that. All right. Item 13, council committee appointments. Item 13A, graduate and professional student government organization. So we, well, let's have a motion to appoint, please. No, we don't, we have to appoint somebody, though, right? So never mind. Hold off on that. Yeah, so we agreed at our last meeting to assign a councilperson as liaison to the graduate and professional student government organization. And I'm happy that we're able to do that. I asked Kelly to distribute a current list of the council assignments, thinking we need to try to think about balance, and, but, you know, so that nobody is doing too much, and maybe nobody's doing too little, so to speak, on assignments. But in the end, I'm really looking for a volunteer. Would someone like to volunteer to be the liaison?
They have food at their meeting.
What's that? They have food at their meetings, Ben?
Oh.
There's food, then there's food.
Wasn't there some question about conflict between our meeting and their meeting?
They said they would make an adjustment, it sounded like. So, I mean, they're going to have to if they want us to be involved. Can you come up for a second, Ben? Because maybe you can answer my question. Did, do I recall that they said they meet once a month?
Correct.
Okay. Because they were meeting, like, first Tuesday, wasn't that it?
I, yeah.
Say who you are, would you just for the record?
Yeah, Benjamin Nelson, City Lee's on University of Iowa Student Government Undergraduates.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, and they, yeah, and they said they would amend their bylaws to change their meeting time, so that shouldn't be an issue, so.
Well, since I'm the one that kind of pushed this approach, and nobody else is jumping to the forefront, I'll do it.
Your idea, Susan.
I'll do it.
Yeah, and that's one of the things I was thinking about. It's sort of like, I did go back and forth a little bit in terms of the optimal way to do this, you know, because it would be both a substantial time commitment for the student to participate in our meeting, but it will also be an extremely significant time commitment for one of us to go on another Tuesday, and it occurred to me that I don't have that time, so...
We all have the same number of hours in the day, Rock.
Okay. So I'm glad that you volunteered, let's put it that way. So unless there's any other people who'd like to do it?
I guess also is...
Would you like to do it, or?
I'm sorry?
No, you can go ahead, yeah.
I mean, like, also, like, if, say, for example, I want to come along with you one day, I can still come, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I really would like to be involved with the students, that's why maybe sometime I will come. But, you know, due to like, a lot of things that are going on with me, with my five children, you know, that's why I just don't want to have, like, full responsibility, but I will come sometimes.
Okay.
They would be subject to the open meetings law, right?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, anyone could attend.
As long as they're less than a quorum, it wouldn't be a problem, right?
Right, right.
Yeah.
I don't know that they're subject to open meetings law.
We would be.
We are, yeah.
We are, yeah.
Right?
Well, I might be...
As long as there's, as long as there's three of you, just three or less there.
We're good.
Or if there's more, you sit there and do the...
And don't say anything.
And don't say anything.
Sure.
Or we leave the room.
So I might be proven wrong, Susan, but I think the good news is you won't have a big packet to read, prepare for.
I won't read. I'll be glad to listen and discuss, but...
And as with any committee, if Susan wants to ask somebody to sub for...
Sure.
Yeah, you might consider doing that with, you know, periodically.
Yeah, we'll just have to see what their schedule is and how it works with mine, so I tend to have a fair, quite a bit of flexibility, so.
I move that we appoint Susan Mims as the liaison to the graduate and professional student government organization.
Moved by Taylor, second by Cole. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Voice vote.
Ah, I'm sorry.
Oh, voice vote.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Susan is appointed. are stated. There are lots of new vacancies. We have two vacancies to fill a four-year term on the Airport Commission. One vacancy, no, one, two, three, eight, three, four. Four vacancies to fill three-year terms on the Historic Preservation Commission. One of them is for an at-large position, one for College Green, one for College Street, and then the fourth for Woodlawn. We have three vacancies to fill three-year terms on the Housing and Community Development Commission. One vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment to the Human Rights Commission. Two vacancies to fill five-year terms on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And two vacancies to fill three-year terms on the Telecommunications Commission. Applications for these positions must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, May 8, 2018. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by MEMS, second by Thomas. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Previously announced, we have.
I just want to mention something on the housing, community development. I guess, yes, maybe there is timing on the last name, because Cindy is the last.
Yeah, that was adjusted with the, the late handouts, late additions on, on Friday.
Thanks for catching.
Thank you, though.
Okay, previously announced vacancies, we have two vacancies to fill five-year terms on the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment. One vacancy for Jefferson Street Representative for the, on the Historic Preservation Commission, and one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Telecommunications Commission. And those vacancies will remain open until filled. Item 15, Ben.
Benjamin Nelson, City Liaison, University of Iowa Student Government. The only announcement that I have today, I've been talking about it, is the First Generation Summit, which is meant to bring awareness and conversation to the community about what it means to be a first-generation student. A lot of times these students, you know, their parents hadn't gone to college, and so in terms of filling out college applications or financial aid, their parents can't help them, they're, they're on their own, and so they're unique struggles to that particular identity, and it's, and it's one that hasn't been talked about in the past. So this is, this is probably one of the biggest passion projects of both Lily and Sanchez and Jacob Simpson, so they're extremely excited to see it happen, but it's, registration is open. I can send everybody a link if they're so interested, but it is Saturday, and we're really excited for the event. And then with that said, one meeting left. Go Hawks.
All right, item 16, City Council Information. Why don't we, let's see now, start with John and move to the right?
Okay, I'll just mention the, this coming Thursday, April 5th, at 4:30, will be the groundbreaking for the Housing First facility that's sponsored through the Shelter House. I think that's a really significant achievement that we're, will be building there. It's the, the groundbreaking will be at 8:20, Cross Park Avenue, so this coming Thursday, 4:30.
Okay, Susan?
Had the opportunity on Saturday to go to St. Kofa's conference, Brighter Future Focused, is oriented towards making a better life for women, women and girls of color in our community. So Latasha Deloach and Rakisha Harrington were two of the key people involved in organizing this. They had a couple of women come in from South University, which is in Savannah, Georgia, both women of color, PhDs, who work in this area in terms of looking at demographics and statistics, et cetera. Great presentations, a lot of great networking and discussion about what we can do in this community to improve things, both short-term, long-term. So just a real positive, positive event, and just want to congratulate Latasha and Rakisha and everybody else involved in putting together that event. It was, it was really good. We had a JEC meeting last week, nothing really exciting out of that. Steering Committee for the Access Center is moving forward with things, certainly looking at how the state legislation affects what we're going to do here. There've been, been a few articles in the paper lately about that, and we don't exactly know, lots of times when that type of legislation is passed, there's still a lot of regulations and administrative rules that have to go with it, so we don't know exactly the impact. Having a lot more discussion also with the university and their potential involvement in different ways with that. So still optimistic, still got a lot of work to do, but hopefully we'll have that up and going here.
Hope so. Pauline?
Also on Thursday is a City of Literature event, and actually all this week, starting tomorrow, we'll have the visitors. Don't want to steal Jim's thunder, because he likes to talk about the UNESCO City of Literature, but we have the event tomorrow also. Hopefully, I was thinking about that, too. The City of Literature event tomorrow, that we moved our meeting up so that we could all go, so hopefully folks can go to that. This Saturday, I'll be attending the Leadership Academy, which should be very interesting. I attended their Part One, which was very helpful, and, and this one also should be as far as becoming a municipal leader and, and learning about the ropes of that. You're never too young to know about those things. And Jim and I had the opportunity to meet with a group from the International Visitors Program from Russia, and it was going to be dealing with, they were community members in various communities, St. Petersburg and Moscow in Russia, that dealt with disability issues, and in fact, three of them were in wheelchairs, which was interesting to see. And it just, they were just, in their broken English and their Russian, through an interpreter, were so impressed with the things that we as a city and a community and a county do to assist folks with disabilities, mental and physical. And it just made me realize that we kind of take for granted what we do and the services that we provide, and just even like little things. They, they focused on, Jim and I talked about our listening posts and our council meetings being televised and how folks can learn about things, and they were just so impressed, and, and even publishing notices in the newspaper. It seemed like that was probably a major ordeal for them to have, to be able to do those kinds of things. So made, made me more appreciative of what we have here. That, that's it.
It was a great fun meeting with them, for sure. Maz?
I really don't have a lot to report, just still hanging there. And enjoying the city councils meeting every day, learning something new. And yeah, the only thing that I guess on Saturday, I'm going to have interview by the American Voice TV from Washington, they coming here. And also, and also TV from Washington, I guess it may be, they can come and record some, like, look at me while I'm doing like city council meeting by the end of the month or something like that. They just like doing a story about me.
Excellent.
Perfect. Thanks.
Rockney?
Well, I'll provide a few more details about the City of Literature this week. As Pauline had mentioned, the City of Literature is going to be inviting folks from around, other representatives from UNESCO Cities of Literature from throughout the world. And so we'll have people coming in from China, from Baghdad, various countries within Europe.
Iceland.
Iceland. It is really going to be an incredible event. Most of the events, though, are, are going to be closed session. This is actually going to be a working conference where they sort of talk about the various initiatives that they have. And as Pauline had briefly mentioned, though, there will be one event that will be open to the public, that I encourage people to attend. That will be part of the Thursday's at Hancher program. City of Literature representatives will be in attendance, and a panel discussion will occur from 5:15 to 6:00 PM to allow community members to hear about what's going on with this fantastic program. I also want to continue to shout out, give a shout out to John Kenyon. He continues to do amazingly wonderful work. You know, there's not a huge template for the City of Literature. I think we're one of the first in the United States.
We are the first.
So for him to be able to do what he's done in terms of programming, working with the kids, you know, enhancing the City of Literature locally, but at the same time giving us sort of a, a spot on the world stage, I think really speaks to what he's done, as well as my fellow board members who've done a really terrific job on that. And I'm hoping, Jim, maybe you can elaborate during your comment, a little bit more, I understand that as part of this process, we're also going to be having some of our friends from Baghdad that will be coming back to here, is my understanding, and that's sort of a follow-up to the trip that you had done about a year ago, as far as that goes. So if you could share maybe a few more details about that, that would be great, if you know.
I do know, and I'd be happy to share. There's only one person, his name's Sadek Mohammed. He's the Director of the City of Literature for Baghdad. So he is the person who we worked through in terms of getting an invitation from the mayor of Baghdad for Chris Merrill from the International Writing Program and me to go there, and we did that back in May. So I, I think, we sort of owe Sadek a debt, so we've arranged to fund his travel here, and I'm going to pick him up at the airport, I guess tomorrow, kind of lose track of time, you know. But I'm going to fetch him and the, the Director from Norwich, England, yeah, and take them to the Hilton Hotel, Hilton Garden Inn, and then to the reception, which ought to be fun. I'm looking forward to that. Yeah, so it's a terrific event. We, we were the first UNESCO City of Literature in the United States, and various cities have turned to John Kenyon for advice about how to put together an application, how to get it approved, and that kind of thing. So John's done really well. I agree.
Can I mention one thing I forgot, Jim?
Sure, sure.
Next Monday, April 9th, there is a forum on hate crimes. All right. At the University Capital Center, it's Room 2420D, and, oh boy, I didn't write down the time, hang on.
It's not a packet, is it?
At five, I'm sorry, 6:30. And I know that the Iowa City Police Department, I believe, represented, representatives from the FBI and others are going to be there, so would encourage people to put that on their calendar again. It's next Monday, the 9th, at 6:30 in Room 2420D of the University Capital Center.
Right, thanks for bringing that up, Susan. I wanted to mention several things to you, a few of which have already been discussed. So I want just to note that I joined Mayor's Lundell and Donahue in submitting an op-ed to all the local newspapers concerning the state legislature's possible elimination of or accelerated phase-out of backfill payments. I don't know if it's, that op-ed has appeared in all the newspapers?
Yeah, I saw it in Sunday, in the Gazette.
In the Gazette, Sunday? Yeah, I don't see this on the Gazette usually, but, and I know it appeared in Little Village, but I don't know if it's appeared, I haven't seen it in the Press Citizen, and I haven't seen it in the Daily Island, so I'm not sure what's going on with that. Also, as you instructed me, I have drafted a letter to the Iowa DOT concerning the widening of I-380. It's, we need to handle this with some care, so I've had conversations with Mayor Lundell, people in the Convention and Visitors Bureau, this group convened by President Harold, and I'll be talking with Jeff Moore about the draft. But the letter is going to say that we have objections to the widening of that road, and I've been telling people that, that there's just, I don't want to be subtle about various ways of expressing details. So action is taking place. Also, on March the 22nd, Captain Troy Kelsey and I were interviewed by Sia Mali on KSUI radio about local policy and actions concerning immigrants and refugees. Has a pretty stimulating interview. He's, Sia is a really stimulating interviewer, is fun to talk to. I also want to praise Iowa City's students and their March For Our Lives that took place on March the 24th. I wish I'd been able to walk with them, I was not and didn't, but I was very proud of them. Also, we should note that the Mission Creek Festival will run from, I think, April the 3rd through the 8th. If I'm wrong about that, somebody tell me. And United World Wrestling will hold its World Cup here on April the 7th and 8th. So Josh Shamberger and the Convention and Visitors Bureau is pulling his hair out. But I think they got disappointing news about Russian and Iranian wrestlers, though. I, I know the Iranian wrestlers somehow were told they could not participate, and I read something a few days ago about the Russian wrestlers, so I, I don't really know for sure who's going to show up. Also, let's see, there's a Violence in Schools panel discussion from 6:00 to 7:30 on Wednesday, April the 4th. Rockney, I sent you an email about that earlier today, and one to Kingsley also, asking if one of you could be on that panel. So if you need to follow up with me, let's do that. See, there's a Building Workers' Power Event on Saturday, April the 7th, from 9:00 in the morning to 3:30 in the afternoon in 2520, University Capital Center, is that what UCC means? On April the 11th, I'm going to be participating in the annual exercise of Duane Arnold Nuclear, Duane Arnold's, the Duane Arnold Nuclear Power Plant's evacuation plan. I actually took students to the Duane Arnold Plant, something like 20 years ago, and went on a tour through the plant to see how that facility was run and where the rods are in the, in the water, so to speak. Very interesting. Two more things. Interfaith Power and Light is holding a workshop on energy use from 8:30 to noon on Saturday, April the 14th. And we have a joint entities meeting at the school district on April the 16th. Okay, I'm done. Ashley?
I do have just a couple things, one of them being tomorrow at the reception, if you're attending, you might see other UNESCO Cities outside of the Cities of Literature. There are also US Cities that are coming in for business meetings, and I picked someone up from Paducah today, that was very interesting to hear about their perspective. The Parks and Recreation Staff put on an excellent Iowa Parks and Recreation Association Conference last week, so we were hosts in coordination with Corralville and North Liberty. They did an outstanding job. And last thing is we've got the water, wastewater treatment plant tours this Friday, the 6th, from 2 to, starting at 2, meeting just out at the plant, and the 6th and on the 20th as well. So I've got one RSVP for the 20th, and if you'd like to come on Friday, just let me know. That's it.
Sorry?
Nothing.
Owner? Kelly? All right, could I have a motion to adjourn to the work session, please?
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Salee, second by MEMS. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned from the formal meeting.